Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
She has to do it.
I'm just the smartest person in Belavista. He's that guy on the west side of the crack. When he ran for JP, he was out opposing the primary, out opposing the general.
We can't know that's the way.
Yeah.
Twice.
Well, ninety percent.
Who does that?
How do you find those out?
Yes, what I've already prepared.
Sure.
So they. And tell us.
There's plenty of people running.
Oh, okay, yeah, good point.
And I told Rita that we need to plan.
Thank you.
And you've got that right up here.
Yes, yes. All right, yep, thank you. Those are the things that need to be done.
And find out how.
Appreciate it, Larry.
Because we are not required to accept that type of thing. By law, we're not required to.
So that's what.
We're gonna have to go.
I'm just.
The boss said that it takes her day.
You're always here and not here.
Uh, Mayor Christie is not here?
Really?
No, and why is this gone?
He's gone.
Peter B. here?
No.
Who's got his family?
No, that was a medical thing.
I mean, it's real strict though.
Yep.
And that's all of that is whatever you want to do, right?
Well, where you slash the board, you go down to Florida. It's about a great time for.
Yeah, if you're somewhere else, maybe.
Yeah, nothing's wrong. Doug, it's time.
All right. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call this meeting a order. We don't need to do a roll call because it's just a work session. Obviously, I am not. Peter Christie, uh, he had a, a, just a little, I think, medical appointment today. I don't think it's really anything serious, but that's where he is. So I'm going to take his place this evening. We have a pretty short agenda. It really shouldn't take that long. What I'd like to do, because it's not, you know, official order of business, I'm going to, I was asked if we could let, have Emily go ahead and come forward and present her piece. It's on the discussion item, but she has some other business to attend to this evening. So Emily?
Thank you, everyone, for letting me go first. Appreciate it. So my discussion item is very brief and mostly just for informational purposes. I do have a handout for you that shows a quick overview of what I'm gonna be talking about.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a proposed US bike route, number two fifty-one. And it is being proposed by Regional Planning. We're one of the cities that will have the bike route, bike route will go through. So it does require a letter of support from the city to show that we're supportive of this national bike route. So a high-level overview of what this bike route is. Basically, it's a national bike route that ultimately goes across the entire country. This small segment, two fifty-one, is an alternate route to US Bike Route fifty-one, and it will connect Springfield down to Belavista. So it's about a hundred miles in length, and basically, it just designates a preferred route from point A to point B. And so my way of thinking of it is, it's basically a glorified line on a map. It shows people who are traveling cross-country that they can take this route and generally be riding on safer roads when they're traveling cross-country. No additional bike signage or infrastructure is necessary, so no funding is needed from the city. Only purpose of, of this project is to provide a safe route for people who are traveling on or on bike. But I wanted to let you guys know, because we do need to provide a letter of support to Regional Planning so that they can adopt this bike route, and then that adoption will go to RDOT, who will then apply for this designation in April.
So is all of this on regular roads?
It's all on regular roads. About sixty percent paved roads, forty percent gravel roads. The roads are generally lower traffic volumes, so safer for riding, lower speed limits. But as you can see in the Belavista portion, which actually, I can walk through the Belavista portion if you'd like, there's not infrastructure on every single road that's specifically dedicated for bicyclists. So.
There's not infrastructure. You said there's not infrastructure provided or infrastructure on all the roads? What do you, what do you mean?
Uh, no bike lanes or trail or anything like that. So people will be riding either in the roadway or on a shoulder.
Okay.
Yes.
Two questions. Actually, the first one before I get into this plan. I've heard that there was a plan or discussion out there connecting the back forty to Joplin. This does no relationship to that at all?
So there is actually a different national route, US Bike Route fifty-one, that connects Joplin down to Alma, and that one travels along the Razorback Greenway up to its terminus in Belavista and then stays on seventy-one up to Joplin.
Okay.
And that one, I believe, was just approved up in Missouri. And so they're working on going through their approval process to get that designated as an official route.
When they get that done, we would have some linkage or tie in to ours like this, a plan approval like this for that support.
Exactly.
Second question is, in Belavista, the portion that's in Belavista, proposed here, those you said are along all existing roads, either paved or gravelled. Relative to that, in our comprehensive plan, they had proposed multi-modal, modal transportation so that we could, our roads could share with bicyclists, could share with the buses, could share with whatever. How does, how does that impact, how does that impact us? Does that mean we need to do some real aggressive, positive planning for this section here to widen pavement or add bike lanes?
Yeah.
In both sides for that as a part of our near-term public works improvements for streets?
That's a great question. So to start off with my answer, can I just walk you guys through where the route goes? I realized I didn't do that from the beginning. So the Belavista portion of this route will start at the Razorback Greenway terminus, where the Blowing Springs to Metfield Greenway connects to the Razorback Greenway. It'll take the Blowing Springs to Metfield Greenway all the way up to Commonwealth, where it used to hit Commonwealth, and then the route will head east on Commonwealth out to Looney Road and enter P Ridge. So P Ridge is actually also going through this exact same process that we're going through. They'll also be writing a letter of support. And so to answer your question, we only have dedicated bicycle infrastructure, the Greenway for about half of that segment from the Razorback Greenway up to Commonwealth. So that section, the bikers will feel very safe on. But then the section from that Greenway terminus to Looney Road on Commonwealth currently is very narrow and twisty with no shoulder. And that section, as part of this adoption of this route, we do not have to do anything for that. So we do not need to put signage there. We do not need to add a shoulder. We do not need to add a bike lane. That being said, if we wanted to pursue that, we could, and we could expedite that in order for that route to attract more people to come to Belavista. And so that could be a way to, to enhance that. I will say that in the comprehensive plan, like you mentioned, and also in our trails plan and the regional, the current regional bike and pedestrian plan, that we do show a Greenway actually going along Commonwealth all the way to Belavista's eastern city limits. And so we could expedite that project and get that done quicker to make that route a little bit safer.
And that would require us to partner up with the POA? Belavista POA?
Yep.
To do that?
Yep, we would need to amend our license agreement to include the additional parcels we're going through.
What additional steps do we need to do to further that plan?
We would need to engage with a consultant to actually design that trail and then a contractor to build the trail. We would need to get approval from the POA to, for their okay that we could build a trail on POA common property on, on that swath of land. And then we need to go through city approval as well for likely a large scale development for building that trail.
Timing-wise, once we, if we were to approve this, the timing to do those upgrades like you're talking about, what's next, two years, three years, five years for full implementation?
Yeah, so we're just in the initial stages of designating this route. And so right now, I'm just informing you guys that we're, we're thinking of doing this. In the next couple of weeks, we'll write a letter of support to Regional Planning. Regional Planning will take that to their technical advisory committee and their policy committee to adopt this designation in northwest Arkansas. And then that'll happen in January, and then all of, all of those adoptions, or that adoption resolution from Regional Planning will go to RDOT in April for them to actually apply for this designation. So I can't imagine that we would actually get this designation until early summer at the earliest. And then in terms of constructing a new trail along Commonwealth, that would likely take at least a couple of years, because we're currently under design on two new greenways, the one that goes west on Commonwealth and along Trafalgar, and then the Razorback extension. And so our focus on, is getting those ones done right now. So I would say we would probably, at the earliest, begin design work on the East Commonwealth extension in a year, and then from there, it'd be two or three years until it's fully built out. So we would not have the infrastructure in place before the designation.
Well, would the East Commonwealth, excuse me, the East Commonwealth extension would only be done because of this?
No, no, I mean, there, there's no, this designation does not require anything to be built. No, no, nothing is really needed from the city, except us saying that we're okay with riders across the nation using our roads to travel through. If we wanted to pursue more, we could, but, but we do not have to.
It's just a designation.
Yeah.
It's just an approval. When do you need the letter from the city?
The next two weeks or so, and I've been working with, with the mayor a little bit about that.
So it needs to be on our agenda for next, for our meeting.
For the letter?
Yeah, for the letter.
Do you need a council resolution? Can you just fill them out?
We, we just need a letter of support. No resolution from city council is needed, but we do need a resolution from Regional Planning, if that makes any sense.
From, from the mayor?
So the mayor, well, my understanding is that the mayor will write a letter of support saying that the city is on board with having a national route coming through. And then P Ridge will also write that letter, and Missouri will as well. That, all those letters will then go to the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, where they will adopt it as part of their regional network.
I think you probably would want a council, a city council resolution.
Some, some kind of.
Saying that it's the policy of the city that we support this, so that the mayor can. Because otherwise, if it's mayor's support, then, you know, those things can change depending on what the situation is, so.
Okay.
You know, I, so I can draft something for this month or December either way.
Well, if it's the next couple of weeks, I would suggest.
Well, we'll need to have it for Monday, so.
I would suggest we do it this week.
Is that possible to do?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Just send me the information on the, any documentation you've got and kind of what, what it is we're supporting, so I can put it in the resolution.
Okay.
Just send it to me tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, I can do that. Any other questions?
I wanted to ask you one that we may need to think about, legal, on the legal side. If this is designated sort of, I'm gonna call it a federal highway, though it's not a federal highway, it's federal trail. Is that gonna mean that our current arrangements with the POA in terms of licensing, we're gonna have to take full right-of-way in order to keep those designations and potentially get federal funding for this stuff in the future? It may be something we need to look into. I don't know if we have the answer to that question or not.
Yeah, I, I don't believe so, because we're using public right-of-way amenities. I did run this proposal by Tom Judson, and he didn't believe that they needed any board of approval or adoption or anything like of that sort, but that is an interesting question that we should probably.
I mean, if you're talking about it's gonna be the existing right-of-way that we've got, that's, that's.
But if we're gonna cut across private property, that's, especially, because I have no doubt there's probably some plan to get federal money for this, maybe at some point.
It honestly depends. We really don't need to do anything.
We're hitting way ahead, but I'm just thinking ahead, so.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Emily. We appreciate it, okay? Have a good evening. All right. Review of minutes. I guess everyone read the minutes from October twenty-fourth, regular meeting, October twenty-seventh. Special meeting? Does anybody have any ads, amendments, comments?
Larry found a couple typos for me to fix, and I'll take care of that.
Just typos, though? Not any changes in verbiage or anything like that or intent? Okay? All right, so nothing changed there. We'll move on to unfinished business, ordinance, and I'm gonna ask Taylor to come up and take us through this one more time. I mean, it's, we've done this a couple times, but it's not gonna hurt to review it, I guess, one more time, make sure we get it all straight. So this is amending chapter one oh nine zoning of the code of ordinances of the city of Belavista to define short-term rentals to provide for inclusion of short-term rental uses within the table of uses, to determine the short-term rental usage as a right or with a conditional use permit within particular zones and for other purposes. This would be the second reading.
So, yeah, this, I was actually a little surprised to see that this was still on the table for discussion. It may be better, just practice-wise, from a staff perspective, to have it go with the regulation, if there's going to be one, but if there's not going to be one, because otherwise, this will be just a land use that's in our code with no order of operations for it to follow. But essentially, this is looking at making it by right in the residential and commercial districts and establishing it as a land use officially in our zoning code that we have in our table of use appendix that we have at the very bottom. And then the A one and P one, which is our agricultural, we have one zone in Belavista in agricultural, and then our P one zone would require a CUP, or conditional use permit from the planning commission, is what's on the table right now. But like I said, there's no regulations or order of operations or anything to follow with that. It would just make it by right in the commercial and residential zones and then require a CUP from the planning commission, is all that would do.
In the P one and A one?
P one and A one.
Okay, so question. Other uses in the zoning code? You talk about order of operations, so other uses, they have like order of operations, something that speaks to it, that follows that use?
Yeah, like bed and breakfast, that's a mention of a land use in there, and there's an order of operations for it to follow regarding, all of those have to get a CUP, though, in most of the zones. But there are mentions somewhere else in our zoning code that has requirements for that land use typically. I'm not aware of any off-right, like even a parking lot. A parking lot is a land use, off-site parking lot in our use chart, but there's a requirement in there for permitting, like later on in the zoning code. So we have something to refer to that says what permits are needed. Same thing with communications towers. Like if you're gonna do something with a communication tower, that's, that's an identified land use that we recently added within the last several years, but also regulations and a order of operations was adopted with it as well on our zoning code. So I'm not aware of any, like at this moment, off the top of my head, of a land use that doesn't have some type of steps for staff to follow and administration, if that makes sense.
I wanna, I wanna make clear to you that any of the proposals that you all have looked at and are coming back in January, those are not zoning regulations. Those are public health, safety, and welfare regulations. So this is the only zoning aspect to this. So you can do this and not do anything else. At least you've accounted for it in your zoning code, and at most, what it would do is, you know, require a conditional use if someone wanted to do it in the P one or an A one. But at least you've got it accounted for in your, in your schedule of uses. This is a type of use we have never encountered before. It's not even considered. So they're just trying to get it in there as a type of thing people do on property, and a general rule for it in terms of the zoning. So you can do this and not do anything else, or you can wait. It's entirely up to you. Of course, all of this is up to you, but I think you know what I mean.
Jerry?
There has been some discussion about a, some similar guidelines or regulations regarding long-term rentals. Would that change this?
No.
No?
No, no, no impact on that whatsoever.
This specifically deals with short-term rentals not being in our code currently as a use.
Yeah, there's no mention at all of any kind of short-term rental in our code right now. We have bed and breakfast, and then like we just have lodging, which is commercial.
Okay, anything else on that for now?
I guess, my view is I'm uncomfortable in moving ahead with this until we have the rest of it to go along with it as a tandem package.
Yeah, so we can wait, you know, till a meeting next Monday, if somebody wants to make a proposal table, then, you know, we can do that at that time.
It's only second reading.
Well, but.
But it'll third when we have December.
It'll be December, yeah.
Yeah. Okay? Anything else? No? All right. Okay, new business ordinance, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street, salt, and sand based on price availability by informal price quotes through the December thirty-first of twenty, through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. This is something that we've been doing every year since I've been on council. This is my sixth year, so it's not anything out of the ordinary. Mike, if you want to speak to it, there's a letter in your packet that, that details why we do this, because.
Yeah, I mean, I basically explained it in that memo, so I mean, if you got a question, here I am, other than what I've got there.
I don't have any questions. I mean, we do it every year. Anybody else have any questions about that? Nope? Okay? All right, Mike, thank you. Hope we don't need it tonight.
It's a good time to ask for it, though.
Yeah.
I'll need it in the morning.
Okay. Resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a limited terminable license agreement with Belavista Village Property Owners Association Incorporated for the purpose of providing additional access to the street department, salt and sand facility on Glasgow Road. Okay, I started, I thought she started to get up. Does anybody, like any details or explanation behind this? It was pretty clearly laid out in the packet.
It was all in the packet.
Yeah, I mean, you had the map. It's, it's the water tower, it's the road behind the water tower, that's POA property, and we need access across that road. This is continue that. There's a license of one dollar for twenty-five years, and then we have options, I think, for ten-year periods, two ten-year periods following that. And the reason we go through this, we're, rather than just getting an easement, is because they are of the position, they cannot grant us an easement without a membership vote, the whole property owners association. So they are of the, of the belief that they can enter into these license agreements with us in order to allow us to have access across there, but that's what it is. It's, it's basically like an easement. It's just allowing us to go across the back there for the access to Mike's new facility there. Okay, yeah, Larry?
I guess as a, as an aside, when the city took over the fire department system and all of the properties associated with that, is that not an issue that we overlooked, or?
No, the POA voted. They had a, are you talking about the POA vote?
Well, I'm, no, I'm talking about this, the easement that we're, or this license we're talking about now from the POA.
I think it was already in use, and it more than likely could even already be considered a prescriptive easement, but as part of the development plan for the adjoining parcel, planning commission wanted to make sure that that access was delineated and clearly stated, and so that's why they're going through and doing it at this time.
So in, in your recollection, we did not, when we took over the fire station here and that access.
I don't think they granted, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the documentation, but I don't, when we bought that prop, well, when we took over the fire department.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that question have come up at that time, knowing that?
It probably should've. I don't recall whether it did or not. There's no easement there now, so I know, obviously, we need to take care of it, so. I can't answer that without going back through the records.
Okay. Okay, anything else? No? Okay. Resolution, making various adjustments to twenty twenty-two city budget, something that we do every year. It's just kind of an administrative thing, really.
Exactly, that's all it is.
This, this is different than the interdepartmental?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is not the one that you guys will adopt next month for interdepartmental.
Adjustments.
Yeah, that's not this one. This one is one that you guys do yearly as well, and it basically says that we get donations from the community, and it's the, a resolution that says we're gonna, to the best of our ability, honor the community's requests that we use those donations as stipulated.
We start, we start the year with a balance, right? And then we have donations, and then we have withdrawals.
Exactly.
And so now we have to reset that, and we have to have an ending number from what those transactions were to start out twenty twenty.
Well, this is, this is, you know how we looked at the audit, and we had the twenty twenty-one, December thirty-first balance? So here on the left of that, of the sheet, you're gonna see that the donations at twenty twenty were one forty-four. So those are what we call, it's, we have that concept of unrestricted funds? Well, unrestricted funds would include donations, because they're not legally restricted. And all we're asking is to go ahead and call them assigned, and to the best of our ability, honor the donor, honor the donor's wishes. That's it. So, you know, it's pretty straightforward. And then I, I give you here an estimate of where we are going to be at the end of this year, but that is just an estimate. Is there any questions about it? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. The next resolution, revising and approving new service charges for ambulance services provided through the fire department. I was just informed before the meeting that Chief Sims would like to remove this from the agenda for November and move it to December. Is that correct? Because you've got some additional work you need to do? Okay, so that's essentially it. So that's gonna be removed. Did I skip the new meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three, or is that not on here?
No, it's there.
Oh, it's a special item. I'm sorry. Okay, well, why don't we talk, why don't we do that first? Because it's just gonna, it's just gonna take a minute. Did anybody take a look at that schedule? I did, to make sure that, Wayne, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it, it follows the pattern we've done the last few years, where we've adjusted to work session dates on Tuesdays for the two holidays in January, February, and then we've gone with a little earlier in the month. Instead of our standard third Monday, fourth Monday, we've gone, we've accelerated that in November and December to, to keep us out of the week of Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Like, we would have our city council meeting in December on Christmas Day.
Right, we don't wanna do that.
If we follow the pattern, I don't wanna be here.
No.
Okay, so.
So anyway, that's, it's pretty much the same as it's been the last several years, so. But if you have any issues, whether we can make changes, otherwise, the proposal would be to, to bring this up in December for approval then, for twenty-three meeting schedule.
It won't come back for this meeting, it'll come back in December, is what you're saying?
Right, we don't have a resolution for it. At this point, our plan was to have it in December.
Okay. Okay? Any questions? No? All right, well, we have one item left on the discussion items, and that's a update on the STR process for January on the, I'm gonna call it a steering committee. I don't know what the actual term of it is, but a committee to develop an ordinance and agreement between residents and short-term rental owners who will be appointed to a committee. So how are we doing?
I think the steering committee is an excellent description. The Peggy Lucas is kind of leading the, the non-owner group, the citizen group. I think you've already got, what, four people? Is that correct, Peggy?
Correct.
And.
And they've all agreed that they want to be on the committee?
Peggy, have they all agreed?
Yeah, some of them we're still talking to, but it's Terry McConnell, myself, Jeff Wood, and Jeff Tate.
And if, if any one of them drops out, you've got an alternate that wants to, that would take their place?
Yes.
And I think the same thing on the short-term rental group. I think they, number one thing that they have already done, and that's identified the, the management company that is dealing, or that is handling all of the properties that have been a problem issue. Apparently, there's one company or one person that has.
issue, apparently there's one company or one person that has, that manages those properties, like the one on Brittany, and apparently he has no intention of resolving any issues, I know the short-term rental group has reached out to him, and he won't respond to them, I reached out to him, and I talked to him in the past, early on, and he won't respond to me, so, I don't know if that's an indication that he's got no interest in in resolving whatever their issues might be, but hopefully we can get that corrected at some point.
So, a couple things, what are the names of the STR representatives on the committee?
The STR, I can't tell you that right at the moment, Doug, I know that Maria Pope and Stacy Lamb and, are two of them, and I'm not sure who the other two are at the moment. I do have an individual that will facilitate their meetings, he is a prior member of a city council in Texas, as well as a member of a planning commission in Texas, and has had prior experience with STRs during that time period whenever he was planning commission as well as city council, he's going to facilitate the meeting, so, remove me from that position, and I don't want to be in a position of exercising any influence over whatever their decisions or whatever their proposals might be, let them come to their own agreement, and then.
So this is an impartial person?
Yes.
But it hadn't agreed to do anything yet? You just identified him, but he ain't agreed to do anything yet.
Yeah, yeah, yes, he's Ricky Head.
Who?
Ricky Head.
Where's he live?
Gee, he lives in, he lives in Martin John's district, I can't tell you his exact address at the moment, but.
What town does he live in?
Oh, he's in Bella Vista, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, he lives in Bella Vista.
And the other names that you, you read off, could you repeat those?
I didn't.
The names that you had.
Oh, yeah, so, it was myself, Jeff Wood, Jeff Pate, and Terry McConnell.
Jack Pate?
Jeff Pate. And Terry McConnell, and I'm confirming with them that they are residents of Bella Vista, because I think that should be your prerequisite, I hope, I hope we're all on the same page with that.
I think Jack Pate is a resident, because he ran.
He is a resident.
In Ward Two.
Well, all, all of the people representing the residential side of it is, but Maria Pope is not.
Maria Pope is not.
And I believe Stacy Lamb is the person who is kind of heading up a process to maybe file an injunction against the city, if in fact we do write some type of an ordinance, and I don't know that that's probably the proper person to be on the committee for the STR side.
Except if they, if they, this group comes to some type of a, an agreement that, that the city council can accept, then there won't be any necessary for any injunction.
Did you get what you need?
Jack Pate and Jerry McConnell are the only two that you have.
Terry McConnell, me, and Jeff Wood, I mean, I'm sorry, Jeff Lake.
The only thing I would add to the issue about the threat lawsuit is that if that person is on this committee and they need, I can't provide any legal advice to this Stacy Lamb person, because I do know they're represented by council as it regards to short-term rentals, not that I would provide them legal advice anyway, they're sort of a, they're just a citizen group that's going to make a recommendation to you all, and I advise you all, so, I don't really necessarily think that would even come up, because I think they're going to have their meetings and probably end up with some bullet point ideas, I would assume, not, not text of an ordinance or legislation or something like that, but, I just, I'll mention that to you, I don't feel comfortable, in fact, I do know they're represented by council and that whole group of, however many there were, dozen or so, that were on that threatened litigation, I'm not going to address publicly or in any other privately or in any way about this issue, because I do know they're represented by council.
As you said, the goal would be for them to, the two sides to establish some bullet points of what the issues are and what they agree the issues might be, and then it would come to the council to look at.
When's the first meeting going to be?
Peggy wanted one before Thanksgiving, but.
Peggy, what was the question, Doug?
When's the first meeting going to be?
But the, the person that is going to facilitate, he's got, he has got commitments until, until, until Thanksgiving, so, he's agreeable to a meeting after Thanksgiving, so.
Are there any other representatives on the STR side?
I don't know who they are at the moment, but are you suggesting maybe that they should be residents of Bella Vista?
Well, that's, people feel pretty strongly that way, if you're, if you're not, I mean, the people who live outside the city, they're not residents, they're investors.
Right.
Yeah.
It was simply them as a, representing that particular group now then.
Wendy Peterson might be a candidate for you, because he owns a house and lives here as well.
Oh, he's also a candidate for city council, he's going to be, you know.
So that may or may not be good.
Decide December the 6th, I don't think so.
Depends, depends if that goes after.
I don't, I don't, personally, I don't know that that's a, that that would be an issue to, for the people on that side to be.
Except after the election, if he were successful in becoming candidate, anything done after January 1st then would be as a councilman, not as a, not as a.
What's, what's the feeling, I mean, is that, I think they ought to be.
I thought this was supposed to be an independent.
Independent group from the council.
Committee, separate from the council.
They are supposed to be independent.
Wouldn't be after January 1st if he.
If he were successful.
I don't know that he would even be interested as a member of the STR owners group, but I think there should be probably plenty of owners that live in Bella Vista that, that should not be a problem, that they be a member of the, of the city, that they be a resident of the city as opposed to outside.
We have lots of emails from owners of STR, so you certainly can look through that list of names, yeah.
Well, I'm trying not to exercise any influence over their, whatever their decisions are, the people that they pick to work on this particular group, like in Peggy's situation, I, hey, you pick the people that you think will provide the dialogue that you, will be of benefit to the city, and the same thing on the other side, I'm trying not to exercise any influence over who represents that group on that side, that they be totally independent.
Michelle Shiako is a, is a owner-renter.
Yeah.
STR, owner of STR.
But on the same, on the same token, you got to have somebody on the, on those sides that, that is open to any meaningful discussion, they're not just got a, they got a mindset that's going to not be such that they can work with it.
Well, you know, I just say, you'll be selective on your STR side, I would say that I know that a couple of people have been mentioned, and maybe even the person sitting at this table made a contribution, campaign contributions to mayoral candidate, candidate as opposed to STR regulation at all.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
So if you want a fair and independent review, then I would suggest it be somebody that hadn't made campaign contributions to, to that, that candidate.
Of course, I don't have any idea who you're talking about, because I haven't looked, I haven't looked at who all has made campaign contributions to the.
Well, I have, so a lot of other people, and you made a campaign contribution yourself, Jerry.
Yeah, so, does that mean what?
It's interesting.
That I should be, that I should be?
I'm just saying.
What, I should be?
You're more or less taking a position, so.
So what?
You're more or less taking a position.
I'm taking.
No regulation.
No, no, I'm not taking.
If you're going to talk about me, I should be able to at least defend myself.
No, you're not, I'm not, you're mayor, you're a mayoral candidate.
And I understand that, but don't put words in my mouth.
Jackson, what's the, what's wrong with this?
There's no procedure to a work session, if you want to hear from somebody, correct you.
Okay, let's hear from you.
Well, I mean, I just think it's interesting how you're laying out a platform that you're inventing of mine, and so you've never, you've never talked to me about STRs, you keep telling me all these different things that I think and don't think.
Well, here's your opportunity, where do you stand? This is your opportunity, right now, where do you stand?
Yeah.
Do you support STR regulation?
Yeah, so I, I've been very upfront about certain regulations that I'm very happy to support.
Are you?
I'm, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of registration, I have been in favor of registration since the very beginning, I think we, as a city, have a right to know who and how to get ahold of certain people that don't live at a residence, I've been very upfront about that, I'm happy to.
But you're not in support of occupancy?
No, so, what I've said about occupancy.
Occupancy or?
No, so, so don't, don't, don't tell me what I think, if you want to ask me a question, you can ask me a question, but don't, yeah.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you right now.
Yeah, well, formulate a question.
Are you in support of occupancy?
Yeah, so what I, what I've said from the beginning is that I'm happy, absolutely happy, to look at the reason that we're trying to regulate occupancy, which is the septic, and so we need to look at water usage, for free, we can ask hundreds of people, I mean, we have almost 500 of them, and we've requested absolutely zero information on water usage, we've never asked anybody for their water bills, people have volunteered them, and we have not taken that information, we can't say how much water they're using, or what kind of threat it is to the septic system, or how much of a load they put on their water until we look at actual data, we need to make a data-based decision, we need to look at real data to, to come up with these numbers, we can't just say, hey, there's a lot of people in this house, therefore they use a lot of water, because the reality is, is the numbers that I've seen, even if they're posting that, hey, it's a three-bedroom septic, and they're posting that they put 14 people in that house, you know, it's not full all the time, and the amount of water, every single one I've seen has come in between 30 and 35% of what their septic's rated for, and so I think we just need to look at real numbers, we need to make data-based decisions.
Okay, so we had, you saw the Department of Health come in to talk about it, right?
I was here, I was here for all of that, he, he, he said.
So you're more of an expert than he is?
No, what he said, what he said, what he said was that it's, it's important to recognize that the usage in that home is different, therefore the water usage could be different, he doesn't know what it is either, and so he's saying that this could be different, so we need to evaluate it, we need to look at it, and we need to accept the fact that it can be different, and if it is different, then, then we need to look at it, he didn't know what those numbers were, how could he possibly know what those numbers are?
Yeah, well, I know, I was sat here in the same meeting, and I asked him questions directly, and I know he was.
I watched everything, I very watched everything.
He was very set on, we should set a limit at two per bedroom, and he very reluctantly said, well, maybe. I was here, okay, so what about inspections on the homes, so these dated homes for safety?
Well, so, 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 I don't, I don't want to answer every question right now, that's not what this meeting's about.
Well, you're the one that spoke up.
You were the one, you were the one that spoke up, because you said that I, you, you said that I was going to do absolutely nothing, and was, was in favor of absolutely zero altogether, and then start throwing Jerry under the bus, and so, that's not right, that's not fair, that's not honest, that is not my platform, that is not anything that I've ever said, so if you're going to put words in my mouth, you should at least be informed on what it is that I actually am saying.
I, look, it's.
So if you want to talk to me more about this later, I'm happy to talk to you about it.
And by the way, your campaign contributions, I've looked through the whole entire list, and I see several people on here that have spoken in front of city council, that are STR owners, and their absolute position is they want no regulation, and some of them have contributed really nice sums of money, I'm just saying, so, don't walk away from it, I mean, you know.
I'm not, I'm not walking away from anything, I mean, I'm not hiding anything, I'm not, I have nothing to hide, I've been very upfront about my platform since the beginning, but you're just ill-informed on what it is that I believe.
I'm not ill-informed, trust me.
You absolutely are, you, you accuse me on video of things that I have never said or done, so.
Do you support STR regulation?
Get educated on the subject, and we can talk about it more.
And there is a broader conversation here, but we'll just focus on that one tonight, okay?
That's, that's perfect.
All right, you're the one that wanted to speak, you know, you're trying to play it down the middle.
I'm not trying to play it down the middle, I'm not trying to play it down the middle, not one bit, I've been very upfront about what my beliefs are on STRs and property rights.
All right, that's enough.
And you also pointed out that, that I should have some position, or that I should be, not have a position based on my contributions to the mayor candidate?
I'm just saying, you know.
So what's that got to do with it, that's the situation, anyway? What, what has that got to do?
Can you be impartial?
Being impartial?
Can you be impartial on STR, on a STR?
Well, you just got through saying.
Ordinance.
You just got through saying that I was opposed to any regulation, that's not true, I've never said I was opposed to any regulation, I've said I'm for regulations, I think the STRs need to be regulated, I have said that, but I, but I have objected to the septic systems being included in that particular ordinance, and Daniel Ellis just stood right here tonight and told Peggy and myself, that, 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 shoot, ah, dang it, that thing turned off anyway, anyway, he just sat right here tonight and told Peggy that, of course, that the septic system was a matter of great concern to him, and that he agreed that it did not need to be included in this ordinance, there was a broader situation that needed to be dealt with on a citywide basis.
I'd like to have Daniel Ellis speak for himself, he's not here.
Well, Peggy, you want to verify that, is that what he said?
That is what he said, he said we should take.
So you want to accuse me, you want to accuse me of not telling the truth?
He doesn't have a problem with writing, I don't think, verbiage into an STR ordinance about septic systems, but he does want to see something more broad put in place.
Correct, that's what he said.
That would speak to the entire community.
That's what he said.
So there you go.
Now, you want to talk about, now, you want to talk about a, having a bias, how about your bias?
I don't have a bias.
Oh, no kidding, oh, by golly, let's, let's all think about that.
Hey, so Jerry, here you go, here you go, let's do talk about it, okay?
Okay.
I'm the chairperson for the Advertising Promotion Commission for Bella Vista, right? We promote, we brand, we market, and we promote Bella Vista.
Yep.
Broadly.
Yep.
That means the environment, our amenities, our restaurants, our grocery stores, and short terminals, we do, we promote all of it, where the conversation started with me, which I've stated over and over again, is when I started receiving phone calls and emails from residents of Bella Vista with having issues with short-term rentals, either next door in proximity to their properties, whenever that conversation started, I came over and I spoke with Doug Tap, I spoke, I just brought it up, I said, man, I'm starting to get these calls and these emails about short-term rentals, he said, yeah, he goes, we're getting them all the time, I said, you are? He said, yeah, I mean, they're, we're starting to get them consistently, and he said, not only that, but we've got people advertising for 10, 12, 14, 16 people in these short-term rentals, these residential homes that are built out for two, maybe three-bedroom septic systems, I said, you got to be kidding me, 14, he said, yes, the next time I saw Peter Christie, I had a conversation, I said, Peter, I think we have an issue here, and it's growing, and if we don't address it, it's going to put our short-term rental business in jeopardy, because the residents are going to finally have, get to a point where they're going to have enough, and they're going to show up, and they're going to, man, we do something about it, so, all I, all I did was started to move forward and research the problem, research ordinance across, ordinances across the country, we organized a community meeting right here in the Bella Vista City Court, we had 104 people show up, 91 of those 104 said we needed some type of short-term ordinance regulation, okay, so you talk about a bias, I've gone through all these steps, I've listened to tons of people, publicly commented at city council, from both sides of the conversation, emails from both sides of the conversation, I mean, I have gone ad nauseam at length, I have read ordinances from all across the country, and it isn't just the ordinances, but very well-informed about cities that kept their hand in the, head in the sand, and never did anything to address the situation until the cities were overwhelmed with short-term rentals, and now they're trying to figure out ways to walk them back, and we've got some of them right here in proximity to us, Eureka, Eureka Springs Arkansas actually codified the, the residences, where now short-term rentals, if that house ever sells, it cannot be a short-term rental again, it has to go back to a regular residential residence, Doug was just at a meeting, I don't know where it was, talking to Hot Springs Arkansas, which is a great model for, for a short-term ordinance, they put a cap originally, Doug, of 600, they just walked it back, they walked it back to 500, and now they just recently walked it back to 400, because they're having so much difficulty with them, and I'm not overstating that, right, that is absolutely true, okay, so, it, it, we have a large amount of information that says we have potentially several different problems and issues facing us, and we better address them, and we better address them now, I have nothing against short-term rentals, poorly, I mean, we stay in short-term rentals when we travel, frequently, okay, but we have. But we have septic, could potentially have septic issues from overloading homes, uh, we have, uh, number, like, a, a cap issue here, that our city could become overwhelmed with them as we continue to move forward and develop. And that's gonna happen, 'cause several large tracts of land have been, have been bought, and we know that there's plans for that land. But I'm just saying, we better address it, and we better address it now before it's too late. But my bias didn't start anywhere other than feedback from residents of the city of whom voted for me to hear them, listen to them, represent them, and that is a position I came at this from, okay? That's it.
Okay.
All right. So, your committee, does it feel like it's got off to a real fast start? I'm gonna just wait and let it unfold and see what happens.
Well, good.
So, we have some questions.
I think that's a good, I think that's an excellent approach to take, because it will, it will unfold, um, it, it will unfold, and it will take place, and that they will come back with some guidelines or some regu- some, uh, uh, bullet points. Now, whether they will be adopted by the council or not, I don't have any idea. But, um, you, but you talk about my bias, I think I've told Peggy, um, that, hey, I want to be separated from their decision-making process. Uh, if I'm gonna be, all I want to be there for is just to answer questions for them. I don't want to be there in a, any type of a position to give any kind of influence over the, over this group. I want them to come to their own conclusions. So if that's bias, then I don't know what other, what, how else I could remove myself from that bias other than just not show up, don't be there, period, but, uh, but.
Yes, I.
Okay, that's enough. So we'll wrap, wrap it up, okay? But if you have something, Larry?
I guess a couple of thoughts that I have is that I think the, all, all of the members of the committee, whether it's for the STRs or whether the citizen representatives, I think they should be residents of the city of Bella Vista. I think they're, if the foundation is then, would the city not outside the city as a business proposition? So that would be one thought.
I don't have, I don't have any problem with that.
Second thought would be is, if, we're gonna call them a steering committee, if you will, um, but will those meetings be open to the public, or will they not be open to the public? Will they be noticed by anyone for us?
Uh, if there's gonna be more than one council member there, obviously they'll have to be noticed, so I guess that's gonna be up to the, you know, council members if they want to be there or don't want to be there. Um, the only, the only request that I would have any council members there is, again, that you take the same stand that I do, let them do the, make their own decisions.
Yeah.
Not, not be there.
It's, it's that steering committee, we're not there to steer.
Right.
We're there to listen.
But aside from the councilman thing, it, it wouldn't necessarily be open, would it just?
No, this is just a group of citizens who, who wanna get together and make some recommendations to the government. So it's not an official city committee. It would not, uh, it's not a governing body in any way, so it would not fall into the FOI public meeting requirement.
It's not an.
But as was stated, if multiple members of the council are there and participating in the discussion, then it could, it would become an FOI of a, a public meeting situation.
So we, so we don't consider it as an ad hoc committee in a sense?
You, you have an appointed, you, you can make this as formal as you want. If you wanna create a committee and appoint members to it as a council through resolution and give them a deadline and all that, you, you can. You have not done that thus far. My understanding at this point is it's just a group of citizens who are very much interested on either side of the issue, who wanna be able to make some recommendations. That's, um, and they were wanting to do that before January, when these matters come back before you on the active agenda.
So, so is, is the plan to get the committee going before and have something presented at the January council meeting?
I would like to.
Is that what the timeline is?
I can't see a reason why.
We should have some, some sense of timeline for, so we know where we are in terms of what's overall process.
I can't see a reason why that would not, um, could not happen. Do you, Peggy?
Well, that's what I told Jerry, and I, I think that I would rather do it sooner than later, and have something to present to you guys.
We've been, we've been wrestling with this since June of this year, and, and so we've kicked the can down the road by tabling it and doing other things.
I don't think, I don't think that's, I don't think December would actually be a, would be a, a good, uh.
I, I think that might be premature, considering we've got some holidays in November, we got holidays in December.
Well, it's.
I'm thinking that it.
The ordinances and questions are all tabled until January.
They come back on January.
They are on the January.
And they'll be first readings.
So that's when they will be coming back. So whether you're ready or not, they'll be there, so.
So it would be appropriate, I think, to, to, so that we don't have to table them again, is that we can table them, because we have an alternative to consider. So I think January should be the target to have a, a, a planned presentation.
I don't see that they have that many issues, I mean, that many things that are other than issues, so I.
Does that make, that make any?
I, I told Jerry that we'll know the first meeting or two, when we go the, down the list, and we've got eight people in the room, and we say permits, how close or how far apart we are, and we go down occupancy, you know, capping on, the list is five, five things. So we'll know quickly whether we're this close or that far apart, whether we have the right people in the room or we don't have the right people in the room, 'cause this, this group is gonna be a reflection of pretty much, you know, the eight months that you guys have gone through.
Rest of both the four, the, you know, the pros and the cons of it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, is what would be the best for us in the long view.
Certainly wish we didn't have to be here, that it had been settled on ten twenty-four, but with, with what we know today, but, uh, would rather keep driving the buck forward if that's, if that's the only option on the table.
If we can down the road, it's not a good plan, because it is a, it is a continuing, continuing issue for the residents here without any regulation in place. Continuing without any regulation in place is not satisfying to those residents who have issues or complaints, so.
No, so.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't add any, any muscle to our enforcement either, so.
Well, yeah, and to, um, you know, I reached out to Taylor today, and I got the information from the March, February effort they did on the survey. A hundred and six people came to that survey. Ninety, ninety, uh, one resident said, please do something about this. And we're now in October, and we've identified the things. I think it's just a matter of now we have to come forward and put it into ordinance, so.
It has.
One thing I'd like to just say for the benefit of the council, I know that members of this committee are probably gonna hear this, but one of the, one of the concepts that came up, which I think would pose tremendous legal issues for the city, is allowing a neighbor or adjoining property veto over someone being able to have a short-term rental. That is not a road we can go down as a city, and so I don't know what, what this committee will come back with. We run the risk, they'll come back with some recommendations that are well-thought-out and entirely unconstitutional. And so I, I just, I don't want that to happen, and they're not gonna intend to do that, but, uh, but I just wanna, that's the one thing that I've heard in the discussion that would cause me to, to think that, and so I would just express that, that really anything you do that along these lines could not really include anything like that, and so.
Uh, Larry, I'm sorry, yeah.
One, hopefully one last question. Uh, we have a list of five hundred and sixty-seven confirmed sites.
Uh, STRs?
Yeah.
Uh, the count is now four hu- uh, four hundred and eighty-eight.
The shrunk?
No, no. It keeps growing, like, every time we do a count.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those, those.
I was a hundred off.
It's four hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah, yeah.
That are currently advertised.
Yeah.
Actively advertised.
So.
There are actually additional STRs that, and, and this is just a shot in time, whenever Granicus does its work, if they're not advertised, then they're not listed in the four hundred and eighty-eight. There are like another fifty-one that, for whatever reason, are not advertised at this particular moment. That could be because they're just not interested in running the business in the wintertime, maybe it's not profitable, maybe they decided to get out of the business, they sold the house, maybe decided to do something different with it. So we have forty hundred and eighty-eight currently active.
So relative to that, so that when we get a call to either code enforcement or to, or, or to the police department after hours, so that they know that this is not a residence, that a resident situation that they're being called out to, is it appropriate for us to make that four hundred and eighty-eight list available that the police department can add it into their, uh, data system for dispatching and officers to know or be aware of?
I don't know. Uh, I, I mean, I know, I know you can do it, 'cause we've had that conversation. James said, I mean, I'm sorry, Chief Graves, he said that it's, it's pop- they can put it in, what's your system called?
CAD.
CAD. They can put that list with addresses in there. I don't know if we wanna move forward with that at this particular point or not, but we could do it. Now, so the, the, the data, right? Uh, the four hundred and eighty-eight that are identified as advertised right now, we don't have specific addresses for, I think it's seventy-one of them, they're still being located, 'cause they have to go through this research, okay? The, the data is updated, um, quarterly, so at the end of December, we will have additional specific addresses for the seventy-one that are missing right now. I don't know if we'll have the full seventy-one identified specifically, but we'll be much closer to having all four hundred and eighty-eight specifically identified. I, what that gap is gonna be, I don't know.
Do you have a feel for how many are owner-occupied?
Of the four eighty-eight?
Uh, you know what? I could get a pretty good feel. I, off the top of my head, I don't know, because they are bucketed, you know, into the type of, uh, residence, whether it's a home, or whether it's a townhome, or whether it's whatever, but I could, it's not, it isn't very many. It's, it's a small number.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I would like to see that in, the confirmed ones, not the four eighty-eight, but the confirmed ones out of that list transmitted to the police department, have it added into the dispatch mapping system.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I can give that list to James. I, I don't.
I could comment, I, I think, you know, when we're talking about looking for objective data to help you folks make a decision in the future, you know, if we did have it in our CAD system, then when you ask me, 'cause I've been asked before, hey, how many times you respond to this for that, and, and it's very difficult, we can't pull out this, the short-term rentals, we can just pull big numbers from the entire city for, like, disturbances or loud parties. And then we could just, we could just extrapolate based on how many short-term rentals, and so, so if we did have a list, then we can at least respond like we do to normal, you know, we wouldn't treat them different, 'cause we can't. We respond like we normally respond to any citizen complaint, but then at least we would have in our system, we could pull, we can enter data, we can, we can enter a search category and pull out all the data for short-term rentals, disturbances, and give you guys some, some good data moving forward. At least start collecting data to, to see if we really do have a problem, or if it's just maybe one or two isolated short-term rentals that are the problem.
So give you better data.
Give you a lot better data, and, and it give you, uh, give you some factual results, but also alert the, uh, the officer responding to the fact that this is a rental property that's not a, uh, not a property owner having a big party, a celebration of their own. And I think from a practical standpoint, I would expect that we would treat the owner-occupied situation a slightly warmer and more friendly than we would a business property.
I, I don't have to disagree. We're, we're everybody's saying, I mean, that's just, we, we can't, we're not gonna treat one party as friendlier than the other party. I mean, my officers are gonna respond, they're gonna be polite and courteous, and they're gonna enforce the law evenly amongst all residents. That's just the way we have to do it. We, we can't do it differently. And I understand what you're saying, um, you know, there are some different things we could do, but if we know it's a short-term rental, maybe we'll have some, some information in the system of a property owner that wants to be contacted, that wants to be involved if their property is a nuisance, and we can make those, those calls to that property owner. But going out and, and enforcing the law differently just because it's a short-term rental is not something we're going to do.
Quick, quick question. You brought the A and B commission a moment ago. The advertise, or, uh, Discover Bella Vista is a, it's an outstanding website, I don't know who defined that, but it's good. And, um, so I think the, um, the, um, the promotion of, for Discover Bella Vista's been, obviously been a success, because we've obviously been discovered. But is it possible for the AP commission to, um, direct any advertising toward business or commercial development? Like, like, we, we need, uh, we need commercial development in Bella Vista, is that, is that a possibility, any of those things?
I don't, I don't know. As I said, we, we market, we brand, we promote, but I don't even know how we would, like, that's not what, that's not like our lane, is to solicit businesses like to Bella Vista, you know? I mean, hopefully, what, through encouraging or making people aware of Bella Vista, we have businesses recognizing that and know that this is a viable place to open up a new business, right? But, yeah, I don't know. I haven't even, I haven't thought about that. I haven't gone down that road.
I, I think for all the candidates running for office, whether it's in the mayoral or the alder, councilman position, all of them have, is their part of their platform, a, a desire to promote businesses and commercial growth in, in Bella Vista.
Which we do.
Pretty much uniform, but the, the, the other side of that is, is that it's much easier said than it is done.
Yeah. You know what?
Because of the land ownership that we have in the city.
Just 'cause I don't get a chance to talk about it very often. I'll tell you what, I, I have, have a lot of pride with what we have done with that commission, and from where we started and where we are today, it took a lot of time, a lot of work, and a lot of effort, and it is, we are in a great spot right now. We, uh, the, the, uh, company that we have, working with us and representing us, it's amazing what they provide us with. We are so efficient with our money, it's, it's, it's ridiculous, really, with what, in what we accomplish. So anyway, we have a meeting Thursday, just for what it's worth. Is that it? Anybody else? No? All right. We'll wrap it up for tonight, and we'll see everybody next Monday.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Is he still legal, talking to you?
Yeah.